Okay. Good morning. I'd like to call the, or, to order the meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission hearing for July 28th, 2022. Secretary Luce, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Chair McPhail. Good morning. Commissioner Aiducas?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Vice Chair Boyston?
Here.
Chair McPhail?
Here. Before we have the pledge, I'd like for the three commissioners on Zoom to know that we can only see on our monitors the person speaking at the time, the commissioner speaking at the time. So if you wish to speak, speak up, or Secretary Luce will wave at me that you want to speak. But I can only hear and see one person at a time, and I apologize for that. So shall we stand for the pledge, please? Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose standing is one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, consent item, resolution authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the Planning Commission. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent item.
Move to approve consent item.
Moved by Commissioner King. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aiducas. Secretary Luce, will you call the roll, please?
Okay. Commissioner Aiducas?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyston?
Aye.
Chair McPhail?
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Item number five, public comments, time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Secretary Luce, do we have any public comments?
Chair McPhail, we did not receive any comments at the moment for the public for item number five.
Thank you. Item number six, approval of minutes for the July 7th, 2022 Planning Commission hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Commissioner King. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Boyston. Secretary Luce, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dukas?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyston?
Aye.
Chair McPhail?
Aye. Motion carries five oh. The next item on the agenda is case number PL 21 0099 and PL 21 20, 20-0100, applicant of Ventura, project description, public hearing to consider and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance, PL 21-009, and coastal zoning ordinance, PL 21-0100, related to permit terms, surety and insurance requirements for oil and gas operations. Project location, countywide. At this time, I would like to ask our public defender, Mr. Barnes. No, public defender? No, I said that, didn't I? County council. I gave him a new job and didn't even realize it. Sorry about that. I just wanted Mr. Barnes to clarify that what's before us today is, has nothing to do with Proposition A and B that was voted on in June. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Chair McPhail, members of the commission. You're correct. The regulations at issue today were not subject of measures A and B. And the, so we received several comments on this issue. And just in terms of legal context, as a legal principle, it is correct that when governmental entities' regulations are rejected by a vote of the people pursuant to a referendum, the governmental entity cannot basically re-adopt the same regulations until there's kind of boiled down into a nutshell, a change of circumstances, some change that warrants the governmental entity taking action again despite the vote of the people. But here, that is not the situation because the regulations before your commission today, again, were not subject of measures A and B. Those measures primarily addressed the level of permitting that was required for new oil and gas development, more specifically required a discretionary permit for new oil and gas development. And so that's, that's not what the proposed regulations today are doing. And so there's no legal issue in terms of the county's ability to adopt these proposed regulations based on that, that legal issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. And once again, I apologize.
No problem at all.
At this time, I would like to ask each Planning Commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter.
Commissioner McPhail? May I be recognized?
Yeah. Commissioner King?
This is a policy issue, not a case involving our quite a judicial authority. As such, I don't believe that ex parte disclosure is, is required in this case. Perhaps Counselor Barnes will clarify that.
Chair McPhail, Commissioner King. Commissioner King's correct. This is a legislative matter, so no disclosures are required. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would open it up to the staff presentation on this particular project. Shelley Sussman?
I'm here at the dais next to...
Oh, there you are. Go ahead.
Didn't share. We're trying to get screen share mode. Bear with me for a moment. Hold on. If you minimize this, it shows up down there. Oh, sure. Okay. 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 Sorry for that delay. Good morning, Chair McPhail and members of the commission. My name is Shelley Sussman. I'm the manager of the Planning Division's General Plan Implementation Section and the staff lead for this project. I'm joined today by Dr. Dan Tormey, Technical Director of Catalyst Environmental Solutions, and Senior Scientist Lindsay Garner, also from Catalyst, Catalyst's assisted county staff with the research and preparation of the proposed ordinance revisions. There's also staff here connected through Zoom from the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District, including Mr. Ali Gassemi and members of his staff. The subject of today's hearing is the proposed amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance and coastal zoning ordinance related to permit terms, surety and insurance requirements for oil and gas operations in the unincorporated areas of Ventura County. Beginning with a brief project history, on November 10th, 2020, the Board of Supervisors directed the Resource Management Agency to return to the board with draft amendments to the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance, or NCZO, and the Coastal Zoning Ordinance, or CZO, addressing three topic areas related to oil and gas operations in the unincorporated area. These included limiting new discretionary permits for oil and gas operations to 15 years, increasing the amount of compliance and surface restoration surety and insurance from what the county currently requires, and incorporating measures to assure the timely, permanent plugging and restoration of oil and gas wells that had been idle for more than 15 years, 15 years or more. Before getting into those details, it's important to clarify some terms that are used throughout both the staff report and this presentation. These definitions that I'll review are from the California Geological Energy Management Division, or CALGEM, which was known as DOGGER. We'll be referring to CALGEM also throughout the presentation. Starting with the first definition of wells, it refers to all wells used for oil and gas exploration, including those listed on the slide, exploration, production, injection, and so on. Active wells are those that have been drilled, completed, and are in use. Idle wells, which you'll hear a lot about in this presentation, idle wells are those that have not produced oil and gas for two years or more. Long-term idle wells are those that have been idle for eight years or more. Deserted wells are those that have been identified by CALGEM for an operator's either failure to pay required idle well fees or a failure to respond to a plug and abandonment order. Orphaned wells are those that have been formally identified by CALGEM as having no financially viable operator to pay for proper plugging and abandoning. And the last definition is plugged and abandoned wells, and these are those that have been permanently sealed and closed pursuant to regulatory standards. For additional context, the table on this slide shows the numbers of wells in Ventura County. While the well numbers are for the entire county, just over 90% are in the unincorporated areas of the county. As you can see, the majority of wells in the county are plugged and abandoned. There are far fewer active wells. It's a little hard to see on the slide, 1,679 active, 4,396 plugged and abandoned, and there are 2,267 wells that are considered idle. Of this total, a large percentage are considered long-term idle wells. That's 1,520, meaning they haven't produced for eight years or more. This idle well total also includes 439 deserted wells. And all of this well data was obtained by, from, from CALGEM. I'm going to show a series of four maps identifying the location of different well types in Ventura County. It's a bit hard to see at this scale, but the first map shows all of the active wells in the county, I indicated in pink. The second map shows both the idle well, wells in green, and although you can't see it at this scale, the long-term idle wells are also on this map. If you can see them, they're sort of in an orange color. However, many are obscured because of the scale of the map and the proximity of the wells to one another. This map shows the plugged and abandoned wells in the county, and this map reflects all four well types. As far as their geographic distribution, oil and gas operations are clustered in a couple of different locations in the county, along the coast and into the areas around Ventura River and the city of Ventura, up into the upper Ojai and into Piru, the Heritage Valley, the South Mountain area, and the areas around the Oxnard Plain. In response to a prior inquiry by the Planning Commission, here is information related to oil operations in our designated disadvantaged communities. As you'll remember, there are three currently designated disadvantaged communities in unincorporated Ventura County, El Rio del Norte, Piru, and Saticoy, and these were identified as part of the general plan update in 2020. Saticoy has no oil operations within its boundary, so Saticoy is not shown here. There is a lot of information conveyed on these maps. Much of it is hard to see. I'll walk through some of it with you. The boundary of the DDC is in the large orange boundary there. The colored, oh, sorry. The colored dots represent the different well types, which we went over. It's really difficult that you can't see some of this detail, but again, the pink is active, the green is idle, the plugged and abandoned are gray. There are well counts in each of the DDCs in those boxes in the upper right of the maps. And for example, I can read some of them since it's probably very hard for you to see. In El Rio, there are seven active wells. I won't go through each of the categories, but 12 long-term idle wells, again, in El Rio del Norte. And in Piru, there are 104 active wells and 111 long-term idle wells. And if you can see that yellow circle on the Piru map, that shows more or less where the development is, the community, the actual community of Piru is in that general area. And you can see how that relates to the location of the surrounding wells. So moving from background and context into the proposed ordinance provisions, we'll start with the first, with the board's first direction, which was to limit new discretionary permits to 15 years. And a note moving forward regarding the proposed amendments, the new language is largely identical in both the CZO and the NCZO. So the board's direction was to limit the term of new discretionary oil and gas wells, I mean, gas permits, I'm sorry, to 15 years, except for permits and approvals issued for post-closure. And so the proposed ordinance does include a maximum 15-year permit duration for new or modified CUPs, and it also allows for subsequent CUP renewal terms of up to five years. And the permit time limit does not apply to antiquated permits. As far as current CUPs, CUP durations, as we've noted on the slide, none are currently specified in our ordinances, but CUPs typically range between 10, CUP durations usually range from 10 to 30 years. The second request from the board was to propose revised sureties. Both the CZO and NCZO currently require not less than $10,000 for each well or $10,000 for all operations. The proposed amendments include three sureties, as listed here, surface restoration surety, well plugging and abandonment surety, and a supplemental surety for wells that have been idle for at least 15 years. The sureties are, the surety amounts are based on the number of active and idle wells in the county, and sureties would be released after all regulatory requirements have been satisfied. Unlike the amendments to the permit term, which only applies to new permits, the new surety and insurance provisions would apply to both existing and new permits. The county's right to acquire these financial assurances rests with its police powers and its right to protect public health and safety and prevent public nuisance. I'll go through each of the sureties in more detail, starting with the proposed restoration surety. The purpose of the surface restoration surety is to help fund surface restoration if the operator does not fund or complete these activities. The amount of the surety is based on the cost to decommission a typical 10-well operation, which in addition to the 10 wells, can include ancillary equipment, including tanks, flares, pipelines, et cetera. The cost estimate of $186,000 for this decommissioning was provided by Catalyst, and the unit costs that go into that estimate are all listed in Exhibit 6 of your staff report. The ordinance also allows operators to provide a restoration surety based on site-specific restoration plans and cost estimates, which would be prepared by a qualified third party and approved by the county. These photos are provided to give you a sense of the types of equipment that are located on the surface. Again, surface infrastructure can include storage tanks, water treatment systems, gas separation and treatment systems, waste storage areas, and pipelines. This table shows the surety amounts that staff is proposing. We divided the operators into categories based on the number of active and idle wells an operator has in the county. Starting with that baseline estimate of $186,000 for the 10-well operation, we reduced the amount for those with smaller operations and raised the amount for larger ones. Based on our research, the cost of surety is approximately 2% to 4% of the surety amount. I've listed some examples here. You can see that for the smallest operations, which is our largest category based on the number of operators, the cost of the surface restoration surety is approximately $2,000 to $4,000 a year. And for the largest operators, the cost is between $200,000 and $400,000 a year. Turning to the well abandonment surety, this surety is proposed based on the likelihood that some wells in the county will become orphaned, and the state will not have adequate resources to address them. Orphaned wells can have several negative impacts, including impacts to human health and the environment, as well as the potential to impair future land development. As the numbers show, there are many idle wells in Ventura County, including over 1,500 that have been idle for eight years or more. Staff's recommendation is to require a $36,000 surety for every active and idle well, not to exceed $5 million for any single operator. The three largest operators in the county would hit that $5 million cap, and with no cap, the sureties would range from approximately $20 million to $53 million. The $36,000 surety represents approximately 25% of estimated plugging and abandonment cost. There are a myriad of cost estimates for plugging and abandoning that range dramatically, and the estimate we used was derived from data provided by CALGEM, and it's based on payments that CALGEM made to its contractors to plug and abandon 50 orphaned wells throughout the state. That average cost was $143,300. The final surety is the long-term idle well supplement surety. This addresses the board's direction to incorporate measures to assure the timely, permanent plugging and restoration of oil and gas wells that have been idle for 15 years or more. Given that CALGEM has the authority over timing and implementation of plugging and abandonment, staff believes that this surety is a way to incentivize operators to address their long-term idle wells, of which there are over 1,200. This table shows the estimated cost of plugging and abandoning idle wells in Ventura County based on the likelihood that an idle well will require closure as opposed to being returned to production. There is data showing that the longer a well remains idle, the less likely it is to be brought back into production. CALGEM commissioned a study from the California Council on Science and Technology to evaluate issues related to orphaned wells in California. And based on that information in that report, staff, staff calculated how many idle wells would require closure and what that might cost based on CALGEM's estimate of $143,300 per well. And these numbers reflect that analysis. So for example, looking at long-term idle wells, based on the CCST analysis, 80% of those long-term idle wells would be expected to be plugged and abandoned as opposed to being brought back into production. The cost of plugging and abandoning, abandoning these 1,216 wells is estimated at just over $174 million. The state does collect bonds from operators for plugging and abandonment, and they also require operators to pay fees for idle wells or file an idle well management plan, which outlines an operator's plans for plugging and abandoning its idle wells. For example, the state requires a $25,000 bond for a well that's less than 10,000 feet deep, or a $40,000 bond for each well that is 10,000 feet or deeper, or an operator can provide a blanket bond of up to $3 million for more than 10,000 wells. Idle well fees range from $150 for an idle well of seven years to $1,500 for a well that has been idle for 20 years or more. There are also some state funds that have money that can be used for plugging and abandoning orphaned wells. One fund has $8 million, and the other allows $5 million to be spent annually on the plugging and abandonment of orphaned wells. The state provided its own estimate of how much it might cost to plug and abandon currently known orphaned and deserted wells statewide. Its estimate is $974 million. This compares to the $13 million that the state currently has access to for plugging and abandoning orphaned wells, excuse me. The Planning Division consulted directly with the CALGEM supervisor on our three proposed surety categories and amounts, and he was very supportive of the approach that we were taking. Turning to insurance requirements, our current requirements call for a range of liability and property damage amounts ranging from $500,000 to $2 million. After consulting with the county's Risk Management Office, staff is proposing three new types of insurances in addition to a general liability policy. staff is proposing three new types of insurances in addition to a general liability policy. The amounts we're recommending are in line with those jurisdictions around the country that have revised their insurance requirements in the recent past. This table summarizes the bonds and insurance requirements I've just reviewed. Again, the three surety types: surface restoration, well abandonment, and long-term idle well supplement. And the insurance coverages, which include general liability, environmental impairment, control of well, and an umbrella liability policy. Another staff recommendation is to complement the work Calgem is doing to prioritize wells that should be plugged and abandoned by conducting our own prioritization process. Specifically, staff is recommending that we commission an evaluation to prioritize wells for plugging and abandoning that have no reasonable expectation of being reactivated or brought back into production. That information would then be shared with Calgem, and we would formally request that the supervisor determine whether those wells should be plugged and abandoned. Staff has determined that the proposed NCZO amendments are categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act based on the exemption classes related to actions taken by a regulatory agency that are beneficial for the environment. And these are Class 7 and 8, as well as the common sense exemption, which addresses those projects that can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility the activity may have significant effect on the environment. Staff also concluded that there are no unusual circumstances that would create the reasonable possibility of significant effects as the project is environmentally beneficial and does not limit the availability of mineral resources. The proposed CZO amendment constitutes an amendment to the county's local coastal program, and local governments are exempt from preparing a CEQA document in connection with an amendment to the LCP. And the review by the California Coastal Commission has been determined to be the functional equivalent of CEQA review. We conducted public noticing for this project through English and Spanish legal notices in the Ventura County Star and Vida. We created a webpage in both English and Spanish that included detailed answers to frequently asked questions. We emailed notifications directly to our general plan update project stakeholder list, as well as our list of oil and gas operators. And we notified adjacent jurisdictions, the California Coastal Commission, and other agencies. And a lot of this notification was done three weeks prior to the hearing. As of yesterday at 3:30 in the afternoon, we had received approximately 300 comments. I expect there are more, looking at my mailbox this morning. This brings us to the recommended actions, which are enumerated here and in the staff report. Briefly, the recommended actions call for certification that your commission has reviewed and considered this staff report and its exhibits, and recommends that the proposed amendments are consistent with the general plan and are in the interests of public health, safety, and general welfare. Staff also recommends that the board direct the Planning Division to commission a study to identify and prioritize wells for plugging and abandoning and provide that information to Calgem. That concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, before I open it up to the commissioners, I'm going to change a little bit here. Since neither Commissioner King or I can see any other than just one speaker at a time of the commission, I'm going to go down through the list of the commission and ask each individual one, in order, if they have any questions of staff. So with that, I will ask Commissioner Dukas if she has any questions of staff.
I'll hold my questions until after public testimony?
I can't hear her.
I'll hold my questions until after public testimony?
Okay, now I can see each of the commissioners. Whoops, now I can't. Okay, Commissioner Dukas, go ahead, please.
I will hold my questions until after public testimony.
Go ahead, we can hear you in the chambers now.
She said she wanted to hold her comments until after public testimony.
Oh, okay. Commissioner King?
Thank you, Chair McVale. A lot of these questions really are going to go to county council, so bear with me. I'm particularly concerned about the fact that Calgem has exclusive authority for capping wells, and they collect sureties on that capping. And it looks like the county proposes, in these zoning ordinance changes, to include the county as well. I'm wondering if we're breaking new legal ground here or if there is case law that supports two different agencies at two different levels from imposing essentially the same requirement?
Yeah, Chair McVale, Commissioner King, that's a good question. I guess, by way of background, local agencies, mainly counties, have been requiring surety bonds for oil and gas operations for many decades, so that concept is not new in practice. And in terms of state law, the legal issue is whether state law preempts the county's ability to require its own bond. We took a very close look at this legal issue, and, you know, it started with the statutory scheme, you know, by which the state regulates abandonment of wells and bonding. And it's really important to note that, within that statutory scheme, Public Resource Code Section 3205.3, at Subpart C8, expressly contemplates that local agencies will require their own bonds in addition to state bonds. And so, yeah, we're confident that the county has the legal ability to do this. And I just want to stress that the county is not attempting to regulate the timing or logistics of the abandonment process itself. We readily concede that's within the exclusive purview of Calgem. And so what the county is proposing to do is to require supplemental sureties to help ensure that there's enough money to actually follow through with the abandonment process. And again, Calgem was very supportive of this proposal, you know, in recognition of the fact that the state lacks adequate funds to do so. So, you know, I cited that one Public Resource Code section. There's other provisions in that statutory scheme that also recognize local agencies' ability to regulate in this area. And so we're confident that the state does not have exclusive authority regarding bonding, and that the county, in fact, has the legal ability to require the supplemental bonds.
Okay, well, thank you for that explanation, but it doesn't get specifically to my point. Because, let's face it, the county does have a right to regulate the restoration of sites after oil operations cease, and that's clear. The issue becomes one of, does the county have the authority to collect sureties for something that the county cannot enforce? Only Calgem can, and Calgem already collects a surety, which it seems is significantly inadequate to address the problem. The question in my mind becomes, is there any case law that goes specifically to the issue of local jurisdictions imposing a surety requirement for remediation or remedies they have no authority to implement?
And I guess I wouldn't concede that the county, in all instances, would lack authority to remediate an oil site. I agree that Calgem is a lead agency in terms of abandonment, but I want to be really careful about the terms we're using. And so again, I agree that Calgem has exclusive authority over the abandonment process. We weren't able, we're not able to find case law expressly stating that local agencies can require a supplemental bond. But again, I don't think we need to go to case law because this approach is contemplated in the statute itself. And the statute I cited to you before addresses the amount of state bonding that oil operators are required to provide to Calgem. And so within that context, the statute says that Calgem is to look at any bonds required by local agencies in setting the amount of its bonding for the operators. And so that right there is very strong evidence that the county does have the authority to do what we're doing and that we can supplement the state's bonding.
Okay, well, thank you. My next question is really for staff, particularly Ms. Sussman. And I'll, you know, I apologize for repeating a question that I think you researched and tried to answer directly to me, but I want it on the record nevertheless, and that has to do with enforcement. Well, a couple of things that have to do with enforcement. One of them is, if a 15-year CUP is expiring, and they have to submit their application materials a year in advance, will the operators get any notice from the county that their CUPs are expiring to trigger them to get their stuff in a year in advance of expiring? So I know you responded this question to me, but I'd like to get your answer on the record, please.
Thank you, Commissioner King. The response that I provided to you yesterday, albeit after the close of the business day, was that, no, we don't typically advise permatees that their permits, or keep them apprised of the timing of their permit conditions. So that would not be contemplated, that we would not provide that notice to operators that would have expiring permits.
Okay, well, let me ask you something. I don't know if you have experience in this or not, but if 15 years out, a permatee's CUP is expiring, what's the likelihood that the same people that were responsible for signing off on the conditions and accepting the conditions are going to be the same people sitting in the chair when the CUP comes up for renewal?
Chair McVale, Commissioner King, the responsibility does rest with the permatee. They agree to the conditions of approval. All of those conditions need to remain in compliance during the term of their CUP. There's direction that includes when operators change, they have an obligation, per their conditions, to notify the county. Then we update the records. That goes on continually when there are changes in the operators. So ultimately, this is the responsibility of the permatee. They've been granted the CUP, and it is their obligation to stay in compliance. Our enforcement and monitoring is what the county does, but the obligation is on the permatee.
Okay, well, and thank you for that answer, and it seems pretty clear. But I guess since I've sat on this commission, I've seen a number of expired CUPs that came before us considerably after they had expired. Not necessarily oil and gas, but other permits that had expired sometimes years ago. And now we're trying to get, you know, get right with one another, and these continue to go on. I guess my question is, if an oil and gas permatee fails by 20 or 12 months prior to expiration to submit all of the paperwork they need to renew the CUP, will the county shut down their operations at the end of their CUP categorically and unquestionably until the CUP is renewed?
Commissioner King, the reason why staff is using the 12-month period is to provide adequate time to go over application materials. There can be errors or missing information in an application for any type of land use, not just oil and gas. And we want to provide the opportunity to make sure that we get the right information, the time period to correct anything between the applicant and staff. And so that's why we're using the 12-month period to, we believe, have adequate time to make any of those corrections in the application materials, time to do the staff analysis and process it to the decision maker. So that's why it's 12 months. In relation to your other question about expired permits, yes, your commission has reviewed applications that have expired, but our ordinance is set up that they need to have applied to us before the expiration date. If the processing takes longer, in some cases you're indicating you've seen things that have taken years, that's because of the technical review and time necessary to process that application. But the ordinance today is designed to allow that operator to file, and so the permit is not expired. They have the time in which to go through that process to get their permit time extension approved. If an operator or any permatee does not file before the expiration date, then they have an expired permit, and they're subject to going through the normal process of getting a new CUP.
Okay.
And one other thing for clarification, there often can be also a compliance agreement that's established in our code compliance and code enforcement of our agency that does allow, by agreement between the county and the permatee, if they are working on issues of violations related to the property, they can be in a compliance agreement that we mutually agree to that also might address the time in which the permit is being processed.
Okay, so that's interesting that you brought that up. And it also falls onto another issue which has to do with whether, or what, how do I want to say? What due process rights a permit holder may have. This question came up actually in my mind when I was looking at existing permits that are going to get additional surety requirements stacked onto their permits where they're still active and not done. But I assume- But I assume there's going to be some due process for an applicant who fails, or a CUP holder who fails to get their paperwork in time. And one of the ways they may be able to address this is with a compliance agreement. Can a compliance agreement overcome this zoning ordinance specificity?
Chair King, the compliance agreement does not negate the purpose of getting into compliance. So, the issue of the sureties or insurance provisions and showing compliance with these ordinance requirements, if they are adopted, they would need to meet those requirements within the timeframes designed within the ordinance. An operator that would fail to do that would get notification by our code compliance section that you are not in, you are in violation of the requirement. And then it starts the administrative processes of engagement between the permatee and the county to try to get resolution administratively that can lead up to notice of fines and potentially permit revocation. That process that I just described to you exists today. There's nothing that our ordinance amendments today changes in that regards of administrative process that permatee would need to go through.
Okay, I mean, I may be nitpicking here. My concern is that planning staff and code compliance staff could find themselves in a difficult situation with a lot of permit holders down the road. And I know you guys work really hard to resolve these issues, and I've heard time and time again how you've bent over backwards with citizens trying to resolve all kinds of code issues. I just, I'm concerned that you be caught in a vice just because we're adding work to make sure things get done. And my concern is, if you don't already have a system to go back and remind everybody, hey, you need to get this done, if you don't have that system, if you're relying on them to be responsible to know that, I can just see a real headache for staff. And I guess it's not my job to alleviate your headaches, but it is my job to express those concerns to you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia, do you have any questions of staff?
I'm sorry, no, thank you.
Are you calling on me at this point?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
I heard you very softly. Are you calling on me at this point for questions?
Yes, if you have any questions of staff, please go ahead.
I guess my one sort of key point is, I wonder about the fees and the values that you're asking for. We call these supplemental fees. I'm wondering, the state has fees, now we have fees. Are they, in fact, supplemental, or are they just stacked on? Or are we assuming that the state is just going to drop the ball and we have to do everything in determining fees for the sureties and insurance and closing costs?
Commissioner Boyston, I think you're referring to the long-term idle well supplement surety. And is that correct?
Well, I think, aren't there fees for all three categories? At least increasing fees?
Right, there's surface, the surface restoration surety, the well abandonment surety, and the long-term idle well supplement. And the idle well supplement, the $15,000 per well, was added in response to the board's direction to assure the timely plugging of wells that had been idle for 15 years or more. So, it was an effort to incentivize those operators that have these long-term idle wells to plug and abandon them. And you are correct that the state does have fees that it requires, but they are inadequate based on the estimated costs of plugging and abandoning.
So, the fees that we see you proposing today, are those anticipating that the state is not going to participate and the county will have to do 100% of the lifting?
Our anticipation is that our fees would augment those that the state collects. And in fact, there are provisions in the ordinance that allow for the bonds that we collect to be basically used by Calgem and its contractors to plug and abandon.
Okay, a follow-up then. We're not the only county in the state, obviously. Are there other counties dealing with the same issue? And are the fees similar?
We did research this question. I think that what we found is Ventura County is a bit farther along in its development of these proposed amendments, although we spoke with people in the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles. Other jurisdictions are looking at their bonding, recognizing that the bonds that they currently have are inadequate.
The other side of this, and I don't know that anyone has talked about it, but it seems to me that there's a balance between providing these fees, incentivizing certain things, and also, you know, it costs the operators money. So, it's money being taken away from them actively having a program to do the things that we want them to do. So, it concerns me a little bit, the fee amounts, that's all. That would be my question, finish of my questions.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Boyston. I will go back to Commissioner Dukas.
Why? I've said four times I'm holding my questions until after public testimony.
Well, this is the time for questions of staff.
There will be another time for questions of staff at the end of public testimony, Chair McPhail.
Yeah, she does. Okay, I have a couple of questions of staff. Perhaps County Council Barnes can answer. I think he's already answered this question adequately. But there's already permits have been issued. And assuming that the permatee is abiding by the conditions of the CUP, which has been issued on Section 8107-5.6.5, seems to me that requiring them to come up with dollars after the CUP has been issued, and it may be a 10-year CUP, maybe a 30-year CUP. And I understand that when they come back in, or any new CUPs are requested, that they will be for 15 years. I understand that. But again, I'd like clarification to make sure that it is legal to come back on that section with H2, 3, 4, and 5 requiring more money that they haven't had to put up before, just to be clear.
Yeah, thank you, Chair McPhail. We've taken a close look at that issue, and we do feel confident that the county has a legal ability to require the increased insurance requirements and surety amounts under our police power. We do not believe that the county, and so I guess the way the ordinance is set up, it's their general requirements, and we're regulating operators as opposed to specific permits. And I know that's a nuance, but that's kind of the concept here, is that they apply across the board. And as a practical matter, the issue in our county is that I've heard the percentage, 60%, I think it might be higher, of oil and gas operations are conducted pursuant to, you know, what have been deemed antiquated or legacy permits that have no expiration dates and were issued in the 1940s and 1950s. And so, if the county was unable to adjust its surety and insurance amounts, then we would basically be stuck with permit terms that were established in the 1940s and 50s, which, you know, I would argue are completely outdated. It's up for your commission to decide as a policy matter. But that's kind of the practical issue here that we're grappling with, and that's why we decided to propose that the regulations apply across the board.
Okay, thank you. I guess maybe Mr. Barnes or staff can answer this question. But on Section 8107-5.6.11A, site restoration, and Mr. Barnes just mentioned the 40s and 50s, but those sites would have to go back to their original state. And some of these permits, I think, actually go back to the 20s, 30s, and 40s and 50s. When you go back that far, who knows what that site looked like? So, how do you enforce that on permits that have no expiration date, but they decide to plug the well and take the equipment out, whatever they're going to do? But how does any, how do you enforce something that you have no idea what it looked like back in the 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s?
Chair McPhail, staff would ensure that main safety aspects are addressed. For example, if equipment housing is taken out and there's a hole, a substantial hole depth, someone could fall. We'd be looking at provisions to remediate the site, removal of the structures, the appurtenances, pipelines, those kind of things. And then it would be trying to assess what would be stable ground from the issues of erosion, those kind of features. So, it would be public health and safety-based, particularly if you don't have photographs or something to show. Here's what it was before, here's what it is today. So, we would use reasonableness on establishing primarily public health and safety provisions on what is left in the area once all the equipment is removed.
Okay, I guess my, that was my concern, is that how do you take the pad after you've done the stuff that needs to be done for public health and safety? What do you do with the pad? That was my concern, because nobody knows what the pad looked like before they cleaned it up, or not cleaned it up, but did their thing to be able to drill the well. So, that was my concern. Okay, could staff put up the plugged well map? I think it was number three that you had. If you can't, that's okay. No. I believe it was the third map that you put up. The heading was Plugged Well, it was the Plugged Well Map. Okay, yeah, I just didn't get a really good look at it. Okay.
I'm sorry, it's so hard to see.
Yeah, the gray is the plugged wells, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the only thing showing up on this map, is plugged.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay.
I just didn't get a good look at it.
Okay.
My other concern is, well, I got two more, is Calgem doesn't seem to have a grasp or authority or whatever the right term is on these companies that decide, we're not going to pay the fee, we're just going to declare bankruptcy and turn around and walk off. And obviously, what Calgem has in their budget is totally inadequate to plug more than, what, a couple of dozen wells throughout the state? So, I guess my concern is, what authority does the county have to go back on a company that's declared Chapter 11 to get reimbursed for plugging the well or whatever has to be done? Because it sounded like, from the background material, that once a company declares bankruptcy and it's approved by the court, I would assume that they walk away, and we're left with the bill. And right now, not only does Calgem not have the money, but I doubt very seriously that the county has the money to do what needs to be done for health and safety. And I would just wonder if there's some legal, I guess this is for Mr. Barnes, legal remedy that when they declare bankruptcy, we can get something back from them?
Yeah, that's a good question, Chair McPhail. I think it's important for everyone to understand, for the purpose of today's hearing, that those complicated issues are within the purview of Calgem and not the county. Calgem does have the statutory authority to reach back and seek to have prior operators, or in some very limited circumstances, mineral rights holders, to step in and abandon the wells. And so they have a process to try to do that in the event of a bankruptcy or a deserted or orphaned well. That's not something that the county has the authority or ability to do, and so we would not be doing that. And so that's one of the reasons why we're here today with the county's proposal to try to avoid that contingency from happening by having more money set aside for the abandonment upfront. So, but on the back end, that's not the county's responsibility, and the county, to be clear, is not legally obligated to plug and abandon wells, Calgem is. And so our role is, and it's reflected in the proposal, to support Calgem every way that we can to accomplish their goal. But the county would not be taking the lead there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Barnes. I appreciate that, because in the staff report, it did mention that Calgem can go back to previous owners somewhere down the line. And I still have a concern with that because we have so many different companies that didn't start a well that have bought, sold, bought, sold. And so, how do you go all the way down the line? That's one of my concerns about plugging abandoned wells. wells. And my last question is to staff, in the ordinance, and I apologize, I forgot to write down the section number, but I assume it's the same as we've seen before, that they're required to come in a year before their CUP is expired, to start the process, assuming they want to continue with that well. Is that correct?
Is your, is your question, is there an obligation on the part of the permutee to come in a year prior? Yes.
Okay.
That is written into the draft ordinance.
Okay. I hate to put, or suggest more burdens on you folks because with the staff that you have, you do a fantastic job. But it seems to me that if it's a requirement in an ordinance, that there should be some kind of record keeping to where, and this is a decision by the board as far as staffing is concerned, obviously, but it seems to me there should be at least one or two people in your department that keeps track of that to notify people. Your, your CUP is going to expire in one year. If you want to keep it, you need to come in and file an application to continue. And that's just a suggestion, and since it's on the record, maybe the board might consider it. I don't know. But that was, that was just an idea that I had. Okay, with that, before I, any other questions from commissioners? Hearing and seeing none. I, before I open up the public hearing, we're going to take about a 10-minute break to see if we have any additional requests to speak on Zoom. So we'll take about a 10-minute break.
Chair McVeil, before you break, slide notifying the public, anyone who's watching that may want to register in for the Zoom to speak during public comment, and then that can be shown as we go into your recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ward, for reminding me of that. Secretary Luce, would you read it, please?
Good mor- good morning. This is for case number PL 21-009 and PL 21-0100. It's agenda item number seven. For the participants on Zoom, members of the public who wish to speak, please press the, please press the raise button on the Zoom now, and you will be connected at the appropriate time. Participating, if participating by telephone, please press star and then nine to be queued. This is for agenda item number seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Luce. And we will also, I noted, we need to get the Zoom web address up there, and we will do that as you go into break. Thank you.
Okay, I will call the Planning Commission back to order. I will now open the public hearing, and before I ask the first speaker to come forward, due to the amount of speakers we have in Zoom participants, I am going to limit each participant to three minutes.
Chair McPhail, one other announcement: We do have interpretation going on in the rear of the room for those that are in the room, but also on Zoom for the public speakers. If you can, try to speak a little slower, take some intentional pauses if you can remember to do so. That helps with the interpreters in the back. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ward. As the participants come up and those on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record when you come up to speak. First speaker is Mr. Mark Trout.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Trout. I am the president of—
Hello? Go ahead.
I am the president of Renaissance Petroleum, and I will specifically be readdressing the insurance component of the proposed amendment. As you know, Planning is proposing to raise the insurance limits by operators to operate in Ventura County. The current requirement is to maintain general liability coverage. Renpet currently has general liability, environmental impairment, control of well—excuse me—and umbrella coverage. Renpet's annual cost for its insurance coverage is approximately $40,000 per year. Renpet's insurance carrier considers the extent in coverages to be appropriate for its operation. The county is proposing general liability, environmental impairment, control of well, and umbrella coverage at amounts significantly greater than Renpet's coverages. Table 3 of the staff report lists seven jurisdictions that Planning considers to be relevant for establishing insurance requirements for oil and gas operations. The interesting fact about these jurisdictions is that only four of the seven have active oil and gas operations. The other three include Santa Fe, New Mexico, which has never had a well drilled within the city limits and has no oil and gas operations; Boulder, Colorado, where there have been 15 wells drilled, most of which were drilled in the early 1900s, and there are no current oil and gas operations in the city; and then Dallas, Texas, where there has been one singular dry hole drilled 50 years ago. It baffles me, and it should you, of how Planning can consider Santa Fe, Boulder, and Dallas to be relevant jurisdictions when it comes to determining appropriate levels of insurance for oil and gas operations when there are none for these three. Of the Table 3 examples provided, the most relevant jurisdictions are the examples provided in Midlothian, Texas, and Burleson, Texas. These areas represent oil and gas operations in areas where the population density is comparable to Ventura County. The required insurance amounts in these areas—
Mr. Trout, can you sum it up in 15 seconds, please?
Yes, I can. I thought I had three minutes.
You did.
Okay. In these areas, they're comparable to Renpet's current coverages. So even at current oil prices, with Renpet's current production level, the increased insurance costs would render Renpet's operation economically unsustainable.
Thank you, Mr. Trout.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Nora Trout.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nora Trout. I am one of the owners of Renaissance Petroleum, Renpet, and Ventura County property owner. I have a master's degree in English literature, and I have been an educator at middle and high school and university levels. But today, I'm here to speak out in opposition to the proposed well abandonment surety. Now, I fully appreciate Planning's concern over the idle wells. In fact, we've included a $500,000 well abandonment and drill site and lease restoration provision in each of our own operating agreements and contracts. We fully intend to restore the land properly when our operations conclude. I find, however, that this proposal has some flaws, and I'd like to point them out. First of all, as was correctly stated in the staff report, CalGEM, not the county, is the agency responsible for the plugging and abandonment of orphaned wells. CalGEM is currently pursuing a program to manage the idle wells, and for the county to impose its own well abandonment sureties is redundant and inappropriate. Another problem is that this proposal will require a surety of $36,000 per well, but provides a cap of $5 million for a single operator, which comes to a much smaller $12,500 per well for the three operators whose 400 idle wells apiece are responsible for 73% of the county's idle wells. Why is that? There is no economy of scale. Each well is unique. Having more wells to abandon will not reduce each individual cost. There should be equality in what the county is charging operators per well. Another problem is that funding these large sureties will severely impair Renpet's financial ability to continue its safe and efficient operation for the benefit of itself and its customers, the mineral rights owners who share in the production of this vital resource that our country will continue to rely on until sustainable energy can meet all the needs met today by the petroleum industry. In fact, this financial hardship refutes Planning's assertion that the county has the legal authority to impose these proposed amendments because they will indeed impair our ability to conduct operations under our existing CUPs. In fact, they will result in a taking. Additionally, the county has no legal authority to claim NCZO Section 811-6.2 as justification for the modification and implementation of this proposed amendment because that section requires that one or more of several causes be proved for a permit to be modified. Well, Renpet has never received a notice violation from the county and is in full compliance—
15 seconds, please.
—conditions of its CUP. In conclusion, let me say again, because of the impairment to our ability to conduct operations, Renpet would recognize the implementation of the new well abandonment surety condition as a taking.
Thank you. Next speaker, Olivia Simonsen, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Olivia Simonsen. I live in Ventura. This county has made a choice. Once again, it chooses to feign environmental leadership as they seek to end local oil and gas production in a death by a thousand cuts. The proposed regulations you are considering today will devastate local producers. Thirty pages of mostly unsubstantiated claims will impact the livelihoods of thousands of people. That is unacceptable. Local industry professionals have offered to collaborate on potential regulatory proposals. Local industry complies with more than two dozen federal, state, and local regulatory bodies daily. Their perspective in an honest and thorough process would be critical. However, no one I know in the oil and gas industry has been approached for information or perspective on an issue that has massive implications on this industry's existence. Instead, the report relies on unsighted supervisors and experts with no substantiation. As usual, reality is an inconvenience as officials act with tunnel vision to end this essential industry in favor of homophobic, environmentally degrading oil and gas from overseas. This is unacceptable. This time, it's especially egregious considering, although this is slightly different than Measures A and B, Ventura County voters chose local production. They chose local jobs, and they chose community. This county only chooses to feign environmental leadership with "not in my backyard" policies and the reports like the ones before us that lack any semblance of intellectual integrity or respect for the electorate. These policies cannot go to the board in this state. They are unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jane Farkas. I apologize if I murdered your name.
It's close enough. Farkas. Good morning, Chair McPhail and Honorable Commissioners. My name is Jane Farkas, and I am the Vice President of Land and Regulatory Affairs for Carbon California. Carbon has a strong track record as an environmental steward on our oil and gas properties. Our business model centers around improving assets and cleaning up older oil and gas leases, and we take enormous pride in our work preserving and protecting condor habitat and the areas where we operate. We have reinvested in our leases to ensure we are operating clean, reliable fields. We are actively plugging and abandoning our long-term idle wells on our properties, and we have a CalGEM-approved idle well management plan that ensures that we abandon our long-term idle wells in eight years. Unfortunately, the county's proposal will take resources away from Carbon's ability to carry out that plan. We agree with the letters submitted to you from ERA, CalNRG, and WISPA, so I'm not going to go into detail regarding the issues that they addressed. However, I want to express my frustration with the county's approach. I've worked with members of the Planning Division staff for over 20 years and thought that I had developed a good working relationship with them. The staff report discusses the CUP renewal approval Carbon obtained from the county in 2021, and the Board of Supervisors noted that an increased financial surety was appropriate to help ensure proper well abandonment. We did not agree to a blank check at that time, which was what was being asked of us, but we were willing to discuss potential reasonable increases in the future. We obviously hope that as the county developed the proposed ordinance over the past two years, that at some point, someone would reach out to Carbon to see if these increases were obtainable, and unfortunately, they did not. The surety amounts in front of you today are a company killer for Carbon. The staff report expresses concern about bankruptcies in our history— or, I'm sorry, in our industry, and then lacks awareness that the county itself is creating that problem. We would be happy to work with staff on a reasonable approach, but we offered the same with respect to Measures A and B. Nobody wanted to compromise, and so the county ended up with nothing. It doesn't have to be that way. We cannot support this ordinance as is written, and we respectfully request that you deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Brian Gru.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Ryan Grau, and I am the Executive Director of the Ventura County Taxpayers Association, and I'm here to speak today on the proposed zoning ordinance. As it stands, the oil and gas industries pay for 100% of the cost of plugging onshore idle wells, and the exposure to the taxpayer is limited, but not zero. With constant regulation comes constant litigation, and this county is understandably forced to defend their position on behalf of the taxpayers of Ventura County, and this costs money taken from the general fund collected from our taxes. Regulations are understandable in any industry. In fact, they are necessary to the health and well-being of our populace, our economy, and our environment. But regulations pertaining to permitting in oil and gas are generally covered already at the state and federal level. In fact, Ventura County is now one of the most regulated oil and gas industries in the state, with nearly two dozen federal, state, and local agencies overseeing it. This has been said a number of times. I can't emphasize that enough. And these agencies are important to ensuring safer, cleaner, and healthier environment for our oil and gas producers—sorry, our oil and gas producers to operate. However, in the June 2022 election, the taxpayers cast a ballot to say no on such overbroad restrictions that, in essence, create a constant barrier to entry for an industry that was once the lifeblood of Ventura County. Do we just ignore the votes? Do we ignore the role that the voters played in this portion of our economy? Do we thumb our nose at the democratic process? I mean, why are we here today? And what's next? That is the question every business must be thinking about when deciding to move to Ventura County or start operations in Ventura County where county government is seen in this light. Or how about those businesses who are planning to leave Ventura County, taking those jobs, those taxpaying citizens, to other cities or states where they have more freedom to operate? Right now, Ventura County needs more jobs, not less. We need more housing, not less. We need more taxpayers, not less. And we need more opportunity for businesses to grow and thrive, not less. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Rita Hill.
Hello, good morning. My name is Rita Bell Hill. I reside at 146 North Saticoy here in Ventura, and I am the wife of an energy worker. The local oil and gas industry works with county regulators to ensure operations are run in a safe and environmentally responsible manner. Restricting local oil and gas production will not decrease our energy demands. It will only increase our dependence on costly foreign oil and drive energy prices even higher at a time when working families are struggling to make ends meet. Elected officials should listen to the clear message sent by voters on June 7, when a broad bipartisan coalition of Ventura County voters representing ag, labor, business, and community members rejected Measures A and B. Stop trying to restrict our highly regulated local oil and gas production. Limiting CUPs is another way to restrict local oil and gas production and increase our dependence on foreign oil. I urge you to vote no today and to conduct an economic impact analysis on this policy before moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Trevor Zierhut.
Good morning, Chair McPhail and Commissioners. My name is Trevor Zierhut. I'm a Thousand Oaks resident, and I work with Ventura Citizens for Energy Independence. I think we need to stop for a minute here and take a look beyond our county and see what the state of California is doing on these issues. CalGEM revised idle well regulations in April 2019 to create far more stringent testing requirements that protect public safety and the environment. Regulations require idle wells to be tested, and if necessary, repaired or permanently sealed and closed. I appreciate Commissioner King's comments and questions about redundancy in legislative and jurisdictional overlap. In fact, much recent legislation has been enacted on the state level to further regulate idle wells. idle wells, including 2016's AB 2729, 2019's SB 1057 by our Senator Monique Lemoine, 2019's AB 1328, 2019's SB 551, 2021's SB 47, again by Senator Leone, 2021's AB 896 by our Assembly Member Steve Bennett, 2021's SB 84. These state laws already accomplish what is being proposed here today. Efforts to do this at the county level are unnecessary and duplicative. Please adhere to the principles of good governance and due diligence and demand a comprehensive economic analysis before deciding on this type of policy. Please vote no today.
Thank you. Todd Collard.
Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Todd Collard. I live in Ventura, California. The background for today's discussion has to do with the impacts on public health and safety and the environment caused by petroleum activities. The context you presented here was the fact that Calgem does not have the resources financial to address those sort of problems through plugging of wells or dealing with idle, long-term idle wells, and therefore, the staff is recommending supplemental insurances and bonds to address that and supplement what Calgem lacks. I should also point out that Calgem lacks just actual resources to do the job. I was in discussions with Ms. Sussman, asking, "How many Calgem expecters do we have in our county?" And she didn't know. She sent a message to the state office to find that out. Over a week ago, I was yet to receive an answer. I sent a supplemental request to the same agency of transparency or division of Calgem. No answer after a week. I went to the office just east of us here over in Hill Street and spoke to one gentleman who said he was not free to comment on it, and he couldn't answer my question, "How many employees works out of this office to regulate and oversee the operation?" So I think Calgem has a financial issue as well as staffing problem that's been pointed out in various news stories recently. I think other issues dealing with the capping of idle wells, there should be some other triggers, one being that failure to pay two years' worth of idle well fees to Calgem should trigger a shutdown or abandonment of it because that's basically indicative of future filing for bankruptcy, which is a get-out-of-jail card in terms of solving and capping bad wells. Secondly, if there's been ongoing numbers of violations, emissions, or releases of toxic contaminants from a well, that indicates bad management, and that well ought to be shut down and abandoned. Commissioner McPhail, I think, asked questions about how do we further insulate public during the expenses of abandonments and so forth? And I'd suggest a couple of things. One of it is that not just for oil wells, but for all condition use permits, that the property owners be bound and responsible ultimately for what is amiss on a given site. That's basically my understanding of law for surface owners, and I think that should apply to subsurface owners as well. They reap the benefit of rent, just like a surface owner does for a tenant, and if that tenant doesn't follow through and solve problems, the surface owner ends up being liable for that. I suspect or believe the same sort of parameters should apply to subsurface owners who receive the benefit of rents and should therefore be ultimately responsible for any problems that cannot be handled by the operator or the state.
10 seconds.
Lastly, I believe there's a need for cooperative monitoring between county agencies and Calgem to make sure that we keep track of who's operating what wells, which ones are abandoned, and there to be conditions that the industry pay for that kind of monitoring because that's perhaps a shortage here in the monitoring, staffing, and financing of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Or is it Lampara?
Lampara. Close enough. Good morning, Commissioners. Louise Lampara, Ventura County Colab. Between 2007 and 2018, Ventura County's economy shrank by $8.8 billion, a 16% decline. During the same period, which is also during the tenure of the two supervisors who proposed these zoning ordinance amendments, the county lost 23,200 workers. The workers who fled were primarily from high-paying jobs that supported the higher cost of living in Ventura County. And things are not improving. Just three months ago, economists warned that Ventura County's post-pandemic economic recovery was anemic, lagging behind nearly every other region in the state. The U.S. Bureau of Labor forecasts that Ventura County's job growth over the next decade will lag far behind the projected job growth for the nation. And what job growth Ventura County has seen is primarily in low-paying jobs in the service providing sector, where according to the EDD, the average salary is $40,000 a year. And what does $40,000 a year mean in Ventura County? According to the U.S. Census, over 30% of the children in the 93033 ZIP code live below the poverty line. And over 30% of the people living in that same ZIP code couldn't even participate in this hearing today if they wanted to because they can't afford an internet connection or computer. What can Ventura County do to get back higher-paying jobs and stop more shrinking of our local economy? Economist Matthew Feenitt believes Ventura County would benefit from, quote, "a deliberate effort to be more business-friendly and pro-growth." But what we see here today is the exact opposite. Permits do more than ensure that businesses follow the rules and regulations. Permits play a significant role in the confidence and stabilization of the local economy. When businesses know the requirements will remain consistent throughout the duration of the permit, permit holders have the confidence and security needed to invest in running their businesses, in hiring more local people, and in putting money into the local economy. Let me repeat that. A healthy local economy is built on stability, and stability comes when permit holders are confident that permit requirements are consistent for the duration of the permit. But when rules can be changed at a whim, when holding a legal, valid permit does not protect a business from new requirements and new rules, then the county undermines its own economic foundation. As you deliberate today, I ask you to consider this question. If permit conditions can be changed anytime for one industry's permits, what incentive do any businesses or industries have to invest in Ventura County? The proposed amendments set a dangerous precedent.
10 seconds, please.
They destroy confidence and stability for all permit holders in every business and industry, and I urge you to see these proposed amendments as a threat to the economy that they are. Thank you.
Thank you. We have at least, I believe, 15 speakers on Zoom, and I will ask Secretary Luce, never mind, to call them in order as they were received.
Alan Adler.
And each speaker has three minutes.
Karen, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, Mr. Alder. Go ahead.
Yes, Al Adler with ABA Energy. I just wanted to make sure you could hear me and establish that before I started.
You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have never in my 31 years in business witnessed anything like the relentless legislative assault that my family and my employees have endured over the last three years. For the record, these proposed policies will severely impact oil and gas production and will be viewed as a taking. But let's get something clear right away. The bonding aspects of your proposed zoning amendments are the most offensive part of your proposal. No one has taken the time to explain to you how that process really works. Hyperbole has simply been discussed rather than facts, which have never been addressed even by your experts. Contrary to your experts claiming a paucity of assets to abandon wells, know that the public does not bear the burden of idle and orphaned wells, the operators in the state like ABA do. This is done via an annual Calgem tax. In short, the state may provide for the abandonment of these wells, but all of the operators pay for it. So again, contrary to claims of woe and doom to the taxpayers, companies like ABA not only put up our own cash bonds for each well, but we, not the public, pay for the state to abandon the idle and orphaned wells of others. I do hope you see the lack of merit in the county entering into the bonding arena, an arena, by the way, that it is forbidden to enter into due to state preemption law. I'm quite sure you all know that the production of oil and gas in Ventura County is by CARB's own measurement the cleanest in the state and ostensibly the cleanest in the world. Please know that the majority of GHG and carbon emissions you are so concerned about come from the engines operated by all of you, not the production of oil. By the way, your parking lot is at this very moment 91% filled with vehicles burning gasoline. Also note that Governor Newsom traveled to the latest World Climate Accord on a private jet. Besides hypocrisy going on in chambers like this all around the state and the country, let's examine some of the other real truths that should be discussed today. If the protection of the public discussed in your staff report is so important, and our industry is so distasteful to you, and if the fears you have voiced as a body are so real, then why has it taken two years to have this forum and propose this vote? One could simply say that the arbitrary and capricious insurance and bonding requirements your staff has brought forward for a vote today, which could bankrupt many operators, are simply a continuum of the zoning amendments you attempted in 2020, which were just eradicated in the June referendum. As a continuum, the county should be very careful about reintroducing zoning amendments with this common theme so closely after the referendum defeat. I think one of the worst parts about this is there's been no discussion whatsoever with industry, no fact-finding, no engagement with stakeholders, and no desire to find the truth. You gave three weeks' notice, and then the Planning Commission staff just bowed ahead with bad facts, poor advice from experts, and is heavily trampling on secret protocol.
Mr. Alder, your time is up.
It's not even close, sir. That's horrible.
Three minutes. Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Hello. My name is Mrs. Katie Majestic. My family and I have resided in Port Wannemi for the past six years. We had to evacuate our home for days due to the hillfire, and some families, we know, lost their homes due to other fires that have occurred in the county. There is scientific consensus that recent catastrophic events such as wildfires, extreme heat, and water loss are due to the ever-increasing amounts of greenhouse gases in our Earth's atmosphere. The science is clear that the use of fossil fuels is a significant contributor to those greenhouse gases, methane in particular. Please refer to the most recent report published by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change for the verification of this. This Planning Commission has the opportunity to help Ventura County protect our remaining clean water resources, aid our transition to clean renewable energy, and hold oil and gas producers accountable to finish their jobs so they can move to the renewable energy sector or any other sector which their skillset and interests fit. I support these proposed amendments. I am also asking that you make these amendments even stronger by limiting permit expiration to 10 years and to increase the surety gap beyond the proposed limit to ensure that wells are safely and properly abandoned. Given that there are thousands of wells that are currently either active or idle, according to the information provided by Calgem, I am also asking that this commission limit the number of wells on individual permits and adopt a one-for-one policy. Please stay true to your stated primary goal, which is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public by strengthening these amendments today. We can't kick the can down the road anymore. We are out of time. Thank you for taking my concerns into consideration today.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ben Oakley. Mr. Oakley, are you there?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is Ben Oakley. I'm with the Western States Petroleum Association. I'd like to point out some of the serious concerns we have with this proposal this morning. The county claims it has a legal authority to impose these additional obligations because it would not alter or impair an operator's ability to produce oil. But the county's estimates of cost to operators aren't reflective of the actual market. One expert believes these requirements are not financially feasible because operators would likely need to provide 100% collateral in order to satisfy the underwriting requirements. If an operator is unable to meet these requirements, wouldn't that be an impairment of an operator's ability to produce oil? The county's finding that the amendments are based on good zoning practice due to the detrimental impacts of climate change simply ignores the fact that these ordinances will result in an increased reliance on foreign imports and a net increase in GHG emissions. Rather than proposed policies based on facts, the county simply ignores evidence that contradicts their preferred conclusions. And the county's assertion that the state oil and gas supervisor supported the county's approach appears to be based on a single informal conversation. The county's attempt to regulate these activities enters an area fully occupied by state law and is preempted. And finally, the county's finding that these amendments will foster economic growth shamefully ignores the tens of millions of dollars in tax revenue and thousands of local employees who would be impacted. So once again, Ventura County politicians want to restrict local oil and gas production through harmful ordinance revisions, ignoring the over two dozen state and federal agencies that already regulate the industry. This will further increase our reliance on foreign imports to meet our local crude oil demand. The proposed zoning ordinance amendments are misguided and show a lack of understanding of the negative impacts they would have on our local economy. I urge you to conduct a comprehensive analysis of what these ordinances will actually mean for the county's general fund and local residents and businesses before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marissa Sullivan. I'm a Ventura-born native woman and also a member of the coastal band of the Schumash Nation. I'm also a taxpayer in this area. I just wanted to follow up with a letter that I actually have already dropped off at the planning desk yesterday and just want to just support you all in what you're trying to do of holding the oil and gas companies, I want to say, responsible for what they've done in the past with all these old wells that are needing to be dealt with and then what they're planning to do. Some of the speakers have brought up the vote that happened in June as though that's, you know, a lot of the voice of Ventura, but they also didn't bring up how much millions of money the companies, the oil companies, used to make that happen for themselves. So for me, I really appreciate all the efforts that you all make in coming up with plans that will help us to mitigate what is really a destructive thing that happens with oil and gas. And yes, I do drive a car. It's true. I do. But I think we all have to learn to live within our means of what we have, and if you cannot see and look around you and see what's going on with our planet and our Earth and Ventura, then we just all need to work together, and I hope that we can come up with something to help us with our area here. So I'm sorry I'm kind of rambling on, but thank you so much for your efforts and for allowing us to speak today.
Thank you. Mr. Monroe, are you there? Mr. Monroe, are you there? If you are.
I believe so. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Hi and good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sam Monroe. I live in Ventura County. I speak today to convince you that the proposals being considered for oil and gas in Ventura County are ill-conceived and should not be taken forward. I retired in Ventura after living here not once but twice before in the eighties. I have friends and family in the area whom I care about and whose safety and environment are important. The oil and gas business has been and continues to be an important part of our local and national economy. Oil and gas operates with certain guiding principles: keeping people safe, keeping our environment clean, providing good local jobs, making energy safe, inexpensive, and available. Low abundant energy costs have driven a wealth-building process throughout the country unlike anything anyone has ever seen. Oil and gas is not an enemy to be driven off, rather we are an effective and contributing partner. It's clear to any observer that the county seems determined to punish and close down local operations. The county seems to be driven largely by third-party interests rather than the needs and wishes of the local population. The proposed regulations you are considering today would have devastating effects for local producers. It is not clear that you approach the industry for information or perspective on an issue with significant implications. This time it happens to be especially egregious considering a recent vote. Regulations and restrictions being proposed in the zoning ordinance modifications are under the purview of Calgem, the state regulatory body, not the county. Fixed-length permit impacts investments, diminishes confidence, and threatens local supply, the opposite of what we believe the voters just showed us they wanted. Investments in oil and gas carry many risks and require years to recover major investments. We demonstrate willingness to make those investments in a safe and environmentally conscious manner and provide the least expensive and readily available source of energy possible. Taking steps continuously and working to shorten the life of oil and gas runs counter to the best interests of the people. Arbitrary limits on permitting makes investment decisions difficult if not impossible. Oil and gas are important to the local community, to the country, and to the world. It continues to provide the energy needed to make alternative energy sources possible. Our joint objectives should include a transition away from oil and gas in a well-planned and orchestrated process. That transition is decades away. All of us arrived at the same crossroad at the same time to choose the right turn to make and when requires cooperation, collaboration, and partnership. The solution requires all of us and what we do. Sound policy would promote these attributes and encourage more of them. We are both a worthy partner and a willing partner in a transition. There is an assault on oil and gas by a select few with a specific agenda.
Yeah, fifteen seconds.
... at the expense of the average citizen who relies on low-cost, reliable energy. Your proposals are ill-conceived and should not be taken forward. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Roseanne Witt.
I'm Roseanne Witt from TO. Fossil fuel pollution is the main reason why the Woolsey wildfire burned within two lots of my home, and two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand VC residents had to flee our homes. My child has asthma and struggles to breathe. Our community is running out of water, and I support stricter oil and gas ordinances and urge you to strengthen these as recommended in written comments from SeaFrog, Los Padres Forest Watch, and Todd Collar. By 2040, VC is expected to get two to five degrees hotter. The more fossil fuels burned, the hotter, drier, and more flammable VC will get. IPCC, the world's foremost climate science experts, warned over three years ago that preventing climate breakdown requires massive cuts in fossil fuel use. The IEA concurred, warning against any new fossil fuel investment beginning last year. IPCC now warns our window for climate action is closing rapidly, and if missed will result in irreversible impacts amplified by unstoppable and self-reinforcing feedback loops, as well as hard limits beyond which even adaptation becomes impossible. But climate chaos isn't the only fossil fuel danger. People living and working near oil and gas wells are also exposed to cancer-causing toxins like benzene and formaldehyde. Idle, orphaned, and improperly abandoned wells also contaminate air and drinking water aquifers with poisons like arsenic, chromium, and lead, and explosive gases like methane, a super pollutant one-hundred-and-four times more potent than CO2 at heating our atmosphere over a ten-year period, the timeframe in which scientists warn we must cut greenhouse gas pollution forty-three percent to have any hope of averting climate heating's worst impacts. Oil and gas surety is woefully inadequate to pay for remediation, poses a grave threat to both people's physical and our county's fiscal health. It lets oil and gas companies dump the liabilities of unproductive wells on taxpayers while monetizing our public resources for their private profit and saddling us with long-term health and safety risks, plus the cost of cleaning up industry's air, water, and climate pollution. You must use every tool to protect our families and economy now.
Fifteen seconds.
Advance the proposed amendments and make stronger. Limit permit expiration to no more than ten years. Adopt a one-for-one policy. Increase surety caps to guarantee every well is timely and properly abandoned. Adopt abandonment triggers. Formalize property owners' obligations. And add permit monitoring and tracking fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Next speaker, Blake Zingerman.
Yep, hello, I'm here. Thank you, guys. My name is Blake Zingerman. I'm a student from Thousand Oaks. I would guess that the average person doesn't spend much time investing in what happens at planning commission hearings. If you ask them to name an item on any recent agenda, they probably couldn't do it. Much of what happens here flies a little below the radar. Because what is being proposed here today flies in the face of the will of Ventura County voters, we don't plan to keep that a secret. In defeating measures A and B, voters in the county clearly made it known that they support local oil production as a way to serve our demand without relying on dirty and unregulated foreign sources. By imposing several new restrictions on local companies on the heels of voters removing restrictions wreaks a punitive political payback and appears to be county government seeking their pound of flesh. With rising energy costs, unreliable foreign supply, and record inflation hitting low-income residents the hardest, we should be working together to ensure consistent local supply. But instead, the county seems intent on continuing to seek ways to handcuff local operators and threaten the very existence of some of them. This process to implement yet another arbitrary and punitive layer of regulations on the industry must be stopped. You can be sure that a public campaign to shine a light on this effort will happen and that the voters will know what county officials think of their directive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Compton.
Good morning, David Compton, Camarillo, California. Ventura County voters just voted to stop oppressive restrictions on oil producers in June, and our government is ignoring them. Not only that, the county is still in the midst of a pending litigation that could have massive impacts on the budget. Has everyone or anyone ever considered maybe now's the time just to tap the brakes a bit? First of all, the regulations and restrictions being proposed in the zoning ordinance modifications are under the purview of Calgem, the state regulatory body for oil and gas regulations. Why does the county feel they need to create and enforce arbitrary and duplicative rules? Also, what's the justification for permit length limitations? This should be determined on a case-by-case basis and at the discretion that should be up to the sitting policymakers at the time of the request. Such limitations, they impact investments, diminish confidence, and threaten local supply. This is exactly the opposite of what the voters just showed us they wanted. It's time we start being honest about what's happening here. This is an assault on the oil and gas industry by a select few with a specific agenda. It serves their personal motives at the expense of the average citizen who relies on energy we desperately need. Please refuse to allow this to continue and stop this effort from advancing. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryant Baker.
Good morning. My name is Bryant Baker, and I'm the Director of Conservation and Research at Los Padres Forest Watch. County records show that oil companies have collectively paid just over one million dollars in surety bonds for the county's approximately thirty-nine hundred active and idle wells. The state estimates that one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-three-hundred dollars is needed to properly seal a single well, and that's just a portion of what is needed to fully restore a site. Therefore, over half a billion dollars would be needed to properly seal all the active and idle wells in the county, but the oil industry has put up in bonds less than point-two percent of this amount. So if the industry collectively fails to properly retire just ten percent of the active and idle wells in the county, the public is on the hook for over fifty-six million dollars, and these numbers will only get larger as time goes on and inflation rises. Meanwhile, we'll continue to experience worsening impacts from climate change, itself fueled by the very companies that are claiming they can't and/or shouldn't pay their fair share. Consider the case of Era Energy. It's owned jointly by Shell, which reported nine-point-one billion dollars in profit last quarter, its biggest quarterly profit ever, and ExxonMobil, which made five-and-a-half billion dollars over the same period. Now Era has used a loophole to put up just ten thousand dollars in bonds to cover all of its nearly twelve-hundred active and idle wells in Ventura County. That's a whopping zero-point-zero-zero-zero-seven percent of the combined profits that its parent companies made just last quarter. It's also about one-tenth of a percent of what Era contributed towards the campaign to defeat measures A and B earlier this year. Simply put, these companies need to be held accountable so taxpayers aren't left holding the bag when it comes time to clean up. On page eleven-eighty-four of your hearing packet, you can find a letter signed by seventeen local organizations urging you to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the amendments before you today. While we generally support these amendments, we did provide several recommendations for how to make these amendments stronger to ensure that the oil industry is doing just the bare minimum of what it should have been doing all along. These recommendations include limiting permits, well permits to ten years instead of fifteen, which is the standard the county used when it approved the most recent oil and gas permit; establish limits on the number of wells on a permit while adopting a one-for-one policy; increasing the surety bond cap so that the largest operators are paying their fair share; increasing the renewal application deadline; and including all legacy surface infrastructure on a permit parcel in surface restoration and remediation. Additionally, the twelve-month permit renewal application timeline needs to be extended. The most recent CUP renewal was approved by the county in February 2022 despite the original permit expiring in November 2018. Staff, the applicant, and the public need adequate time to thoroughly review and consider a permit renewal application prior to its expiration.
Fifteen seconds.
We urge you to incorporate these recommendations into a resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you. Renata Biens.
Hello. Can you hear me? Great. Hi, I'm Renata, and I work here in oil and gas in Ventura County. I just wanted to share a little. Our county did just have a measure on oil and gas, and this proposal seems to take a fiscal approach to achieve the same goal of what the public just voted against. Our industry is very well regulated, and the proposed regulations present an enormous economic challenge to address a concern that is already addressed by other regulations and processes. Our industry is full of local gas and experts that deeply care for this county. I work here, and I know a lot of people in oil and gas, and many of us are lifers. A lot of people in industry have children and grandchildren that they want to stay local. We are committed to caring for this county and its health, safety, and environment. We also have many local and gas experts that are knowledgeable in the plugging and abandoning process, understand the specific economic positions of their own companies, and have not been consulted on this proposal. You heard about the state's requirements, regulations, and economic standing, but in addition to all of this, each company has economic analysis, internal plans, and assurances to address these concerns. The state numbers you heard did not account for the local situation. These proposed regulations are extreme, and they will threaten the availability of the minerals by threatening the existence of the companies that produce them. So I would like for you to reconsider and consider working with industry on this matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Biens. Christina Coulson. Christina Coulson. She's on mute. Please unmute yourself. Christina, please unmute yourself. She's off? Okay. Next speaker. Dion LeBrow.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much for your time. My name's Dion LeBrow. I'm a Ventura resident, a parent looking for the future of my children to stay within Ventura County. Although I have issues with every part of the proposed regulations, the new bonding requirements are perhaps the most outrageous. First, local oil and gas operators have been good stewards of the land and have gone out of their way to successfully comply with dozens of agencies and rules to ensure compliant operations. Massive and arbitrary increases to bonding would have major implications for large operators and possibly put the smaller operators out of business. In conversations with industry experts, the type of bonding being required in the proposal before you isn't even available. This means that putting up cash would be necessary. Requiring oil and gas operators to potentially produce millions of dollars under such a rule will stifle actual well abandonment and threaten the very existence of some producers. We also have to ask ourselves what environmental rules would be required to allow potential required remediation? There's no guarantee that these fixes, we say, would be allowed, which means the county would potentially take ownership of secured funding through any number of regulatory barriers. Allow all of these problems and considerations for just one component of the proposed regulations. This is a mess, and it's clear that the oil and gas experts were never consulted with as it was put together. Stop this madness and take your foot off the throat of an energy industry we so heavily rely upon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Broke. John Broke. Is he muted? Please unmute yourself.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Chair McPhail. My name is John Brooks. Just quickly, for all the chest-thumping over A and B measures, I'd like to point out that despite eight million dollars worth of disinformation and false advertising, some eighty-nine thousand Ventura County citizens voted yes on A and B, only nine thousand less than that eight-million-dollar fee. So let's not thump around here. Let's look to all the people of the county. So I planned not to speak today. I was tuning into YouTube, and on YouTube, all of a sudden, I heard someone making derogatory remarks about SeaFrog on a hot mic before the meeting started. I did not plan to speak, but I'm one of a thousands of SeaFrog supporters who will not be marching in like graduates or paid oil company employees. We're volunteers. We're moved by climate change and the need for safer regulations on the fossil fuel pollution that is so harmful. Oil companies are enjoying record Oil companies are enjoying record profits. It's the unfunded environmental consequences that need your yes vote, not the oil company's bottom line. They're okay, all right? SeaFrog researchers, sorry, researchers, volunteers, have studied plugged and abandoned wells and idle wells, and we've found hundreds that were not plugged properly and most likely are now leaking methane into the air or oil into the aquifers. These proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance are beginning and are very modest. So I would like to say whoever defamed SeaFrog on the hot mic in your lonesome roads moment should recuse yourself from the issue. It was either Commissioner King or McPhail. You are biased and not fair to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Caldwell?
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Caldwell and I serve as the President and CEO of the Ventura Chamber of Commerce. We are located at 2478 East Main Street in Ventura. I'm also engaged in the county's Economic Vitality Strategic Plan and have been a part of those discussions, which were really designed to work to strengthen the county's position as a business-friendly entity. And, you know, as I listened to the comments and the presentation today, you know, permits are really kind of a contract between government agencies and a business. It is, you know, the permit that allows the business to move forward with confidence, providing some certainty to their investment within their business. Changing permits midterm is detrimental to business and degrades that confidence. It negatively impacts the prosperity of the community that has struggled economically for the past decade. I would argue that the struggle is due to policies just like this one that are not business-friendly. On another note, I would just like to say I'm concerned that, you know, policies like these continue to kind of pop up without any meaningful dialogue or engagement between the stakeholders and the county. And I've heard from several of the producers today that they are more than willing to meet and come around a table and come up with some options and potential solutions. So I would encourage the county to potentially take a different approach and certainly not move forward with this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Minnigan?
Hi, folks. My name's Candace Minnigan. I am on the Board of Friends with Santa Care River and also the environmental stakeholder on the Full Moon Pyru Basin's Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I am in very strong support of this common sense amendment to the ordinance. We are in a historic drought, and 82% of our water resources in the county comes from groundwater. These long-term idle wells and that haven't been abandoned correctly pose a threat to our limited and precious water resources locally and our resiliency in times of drought. Our concern is, you know, I've heard people talk about the 15 years being arbitrary. If anything, the assessment and the research done by staff and the consultant shows that a well pays for itself within five years. If anything, providing a 15-year timeframe might be too long, in my opinion. And I would recommend it should actually be lessened to 10 years, which gives double the time to actually close a well properly. Furthermore, a lot of the surety, even when looking between Calgem and the county's requirements, only covers 53%. That still leaves taxpayers on the hook for 47%. And listening to, you know, reading the reports and listening to Los Padres Forest Watch's claims about, you know, the billion dollars that the county is on the hook for, you know, this is just common sense to put the bonding in place so that our taxpayers and residents aren't stuck with the check. I mean, this is ultimately the cost of business in oil and gas. The profits have been made already, and the industry should not be off the hook for adequately closing unproductive and no longer used wells, considering the risk. Furthermore, Calgem is going to take, I mean, I don't know if these people are even reading the reports, 126 years to close all the idle wells in the state at the current rate of closure. They only have $13 million statewide to assist oil and gas folks to actually close their wells. The county, if anything, is protecting residents from being on the hook with this common sense legislation. I strongly urge the commissioners to adopt these amendments today. This is just common sense, and especially in times of climate change when we are in a drought and these wells are a threat to our water resources. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's the last Zoom speaker I have on a list. Is there anyone else who's called in? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Excuse me. I will not close the public hearing. Does staff have any other comments they would like to make at this time before I close the public hearing?
Chair McPhail, we're here to answer questions that you may have of us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will now close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or motion by the commissioners. Is there any commissioners that would like to speak?
I would like to ask a few questions at this point, Chair McPhail. This is Commissioner Adukas.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Could staff respond to Luis Lamparos and Stephanie Caldwell's point saying that this is changing permits midstream?
Chair McPhail, Commissioner Adukas. I believe one of the earlier responses to one of the first questions from Council Barnes is that the administrative process related to the amount of the insurance or the assurances is within the scope of our abilities as a local jurisdiction to make those adjustments?
I think I was looking instead for, is this something with regard, these zoning ordinances don't actually relate in any particular way to specific permits? And so we are not changing permits midstream. Is that not correct? These are surety requirements on operators instead? Could that be explained again to answer the criticisms that we received from two speakers?
Chair McPhail, Commissioner Adukas, Jeff Barnes, County Council's Office. You're correct. The ordinance applies to all oil and gas operators in the county, so this is not an action to modify permits. That said, to the extent a permit does have insurance and bonding requirements that are inconsistent with this ordinance, this ordinance provides that its requirements supersede the permit requirements.
Okay, well, following up on that, one speaker, Dionne LeBrow, said that the bonding that is required by these ordinances isn't available and that there would have to be 100% cash put up, or somebody else said that they'd need 100% collateral. How does staff respond to that information?
In our discussions with the folks that we consulted, we consulted with our risk management office, who consulted with an insurance broker for the county. We've consulted with Catalyst, who's available here also to answer questions. We consulted with the supervisor of Calgem. We notified them of the types of bonds and the amounts of bonds that we were contemplating, and we were never informed that that sort of bonding would be unavailable. And I would remind you also that the cost of the bond is 2% to 4% of the bond amount, as opposed to, you know, a $10 million bond, for example. The $10 million bond would cost between, we were told by insurance brokers and oil and gas bonding people, 2% to 4% of the bond amount.
Okay, so we have different information based on who's talking about whether or not this financial instrument is available. Another recurring question, one from Samuel Monroe, said that there was no outreach directly to oil producers. And I'm wondering, is that true? That this was done without input from energy producers in the county?
Chair McPhail, Commissioner Adukas, I'll answer that question. The ordinance and policy processes of the county require the public engagement to include the adoption hearings publicly noticed, the technical review by the Planning Commission, and then the final adoption or action by the Board of Supervisors. Those are the two public processes dedicated through our regulations, directed through our regulations, excuse me. And then if there's an environmental review document, there's also a public review process tied to that. The county does involve additional stakeholder engagements really tied to the different types of projects that we're working on. For example, major general plan or area plan updates typically have a visioning of setting the goals for that particular area plan or in regards to the county, countywide. Those projects included requirements for engagements either mandated by state law, which happens with our housing elements, also with our local coastal program projects that we've been working on. Those also have mandates under the Coastal Act for how you do amendments for LCPs, local coastal programs, and that public engagement process. Other than that, there are opportunities where the board directs of staff for doing particular public engagements tied to projects that we worked on. Some of those have occurred in the past, such as the first round of our ADU ordinance update in 2017, 2018. That was directed by the Board of Supervisors, that we do engagements with the MAC. So there are many ways in which the board also provides direction to staff on whether we do additional public engagement. The oil ordinance projects that I've been involved in since here at the county, those have been specific directions by the board during one of their public hearings to direct the policy direction, that staff pursue specific ordinance adjustments and to do those through the public process, including review by the Planning Commission and then the review and action by the Board of Supervisors. That was the direction in regards to the measures that were submitted to A and B that the voters did not support those ordinances going into effect. The package you have before you today is also directed specifically by the Board of Supervisors, and that's how we've progressed. So our public process includes the Planning Commission, your action today, or direction that you give us, and then ultimately to the Board of Supervisors. So no, there has been no additional direct public engagement with the oil industry.
Okay, thank you for that full explanation. That makes sense. This is the appropriate time if these industry representatives are sincere, could just as well have provided their own proposals for increasing surety bonding. I understand that no one would want to pay more, but my independent judgment looks at these and thinks that they're, you know, reasonable and are modest increases. There's a little bit of hyperbole in some of the arguments against this, and I want us just to be real, you know, narrowly focused instead of getting into the interpretation of what what the results of the referendum actually meant and that we stay narrowly focused on what's actually before us and what the appropriate ways that, if there is a good faith effort put forward by producers who are opposed to this, that they can participate in this process, get it in the administrative record so that if it goes forward to the Board of Supervisors and then, you know, is litigated after that, that they show their good faith. So the last question I have is about, two commenters said that this is a takings, and I would direct that to our county council. Is the, are these ordinances, could they be considered a takings?
Yeah, so, and actually, this, I was going to supplement my response to your previous question about the interplay between the proposed regulations and existing permits. I pulled up a, you know, what I've referred to before as antiquated. Some refer to them as legacy permits from the 1940s and 50s. My understanding is that most or all of those permits do not address insurance or bonding at all. My understanding is that many of those permits include a provision that basically requires the permitty to comply with all conditions of the county ordinance code that apply to the permit. And so there is no need to supersede those permits with this ordinance because this ordinance would basically apply the new permit standards to those operations, and that would be consistent with the permit terms of the antiquated permits. As I said before, the issue of antiquated permits is important because so much of the oil and gas operations in the county are conducted pursuant to those. And so in terms of the takings issue, my understanding is the argument is that the regulations would impose a cost that would be so high as to render the operation economically infeasible. And so it would work a taking by basically making the operator have to shut down the operation because they couldn't economically afford to continue in compliance with the regulations. Based on our research and staff's research, that is not the case. The information is that these regulations would impose a modest increase in operating costs. And so we do not believe that they would be infeasible economically to comply with. So we don't think that argument has merit. And also, it's worth noting that these regulations do not impose a county fee or exaction on any operation. It's, it would, and so when you're looking at a takings issue, that is one issue that could give rise to a takings argument is the government agency imposing a new fee and exaction that is not called out on the permit. That's not what we're doing here. And so basically, the takings issue would be, in my opinion, would be, as I stated previously, are we imposing operating costs that are so substantial that it would be economically infeasible for operators to comply with, you know, thereby making them shut down their operations or being completely, you know, unwarranted regulations and kind of triggering a regulatory taking threshold? We don't believe that's the case.
Okay, thank you. And I thought of one more thing. And I thought of one more thing. Could you reiterate, I think you made these points earlier, what the county's authority is? We heard several speakers say that we did not have authority, that this was duplicative, that this is solely within the parameters. I even heard Commissioner King say that it's solely within the jurisdiction of CalJAMs. Could you explain how these ordinances would not, these requirements of these ordinances are not duplicative? And that the county indeed has the power to impose these surety increases?
Yeah, yeah, as I stated previously, the state regulations regarding oil well abandonment and sureties on the state level are addressed in the Public Resources Code. And, you know, the distinction that's important to keep in mind is that CalJAM, the state agency, has exclusive authority to implement the abandonment in terms of timing and procedures and the engineering involved in that. CalJAM obviously also has a role to play in terms of requiring bonds at the state level. But in that statutory scheme, the ability and the legal authority of local agencies to require their own bonds is specifically mentioned. And so, in our opinion, the statute clearly contemplates local bonding requirements to supplement state bonds, and in fact requires CalJAM to consider the amount of those local bonds when CalJAM is establishing the amount of its state bonds. And so I do not agree that the county is preempted from requiring our own supplemental bonds in addition to the state bonds.
Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Adukas, any other questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Any other commissioners have any statements or questions they have?
I have statements, but I don't think it's appropriate to make them while we're still asking questions of staff, while the public hearing is still open.
Okay.
I have a question, Chair.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Boyston.
As we were going through this hearing, I believe these amendments would actually be put into effect on existing CUPs that have, already have conditions to them, but then would be superseded in some instances or added on to. Is that correct?
Commissioner Boyston, that's correct. To the extent an existing CUP had insurance or bonding requirements, the proposed regulations, the amounts of bonding and insurance would supersede those requirements in the CUP.
So someone who already has a CUP could have the viewpoint that they are in fact being midstream, things are changing on them.
Those regulatory requirements would be changing compared to what's in their CUP. In certain instances, yes.
Thank you. That's extending my questions.
Commissioner Garcia, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, time for comments. Public hearing's closed.
Actually, I have one request. I was informed that the chat function on Zoom was on during this hearing, which isn't the best practice, but I would request that any sensitive comments that were made in the Zoom chat room be read into the record.
Okay. I will now officially close the public hearing. Commissioner King?
Actually, that, you know, my request was, and I'm sorry to not be clear, I just was made aware of this. Director Ward, is that something that you or Ms. Sussman could do?
Yes, I will do that, sorry about that. Yes, the one, actually, it has a question, and it's from Mr. John Brooks, and it is, "How can a commissioner vote after disclosing bias on an open mic?"
I will answer that, because that was probably my comment that I made early on. And my comment, when I was talking to another commissioner, was I had concerns whether or not it was legal because of Proposition A and B. And that's why I asked County Council Barnes to explain whether or not this conflicts with propositions A and B, and I think he explained it very thoroughly and adequately that it does not. Granted, the mic should not have been on. The meeting, if I were correct to what Mr. Brooks's concerns are, the meeting hadn't even started yet. And one of the obligations of a planning commissioner is we don't make up our mind until after the hearing, public hearing, staff report, and the commissioners making their statements. And if Mr. Brooks, if that's not adequate for Mr. Brooks, I apologize, but I don't think any commissioner has their mind made up until all their questions are answered, and we listen to the staff report, and the people who wish to speak before us. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Chair McVale. And this was, well, the exact issue was not touched upon earlier. It has to do with disclosures that did not need to occur. Because this is a legislative matter, a planning commissioner, due process requirements do not apply, you know, to the extent they would, or at all. But it's different than a permitting action where it's quasi-adjudicatory. And so bias would not be a legal concern, and it would not preclude any commissioner's participation. And so with that, I would, Director Ward, can you confirm that there were no other substantive comments on the Zoom chat room?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the reason why I asked the comments to be read are to make sure that we comply with the Brown Act, that all substantive discussion is available for everyone's consideration and response. And so I didn't mean to cause any embarrassment, I just want to make sure we're complying with the Brown Act.
No, no embarrassment on my part. I just, I wasn't sure what Mr. Brooks's concern was, but I wanted to make it very clear that we do not have our mind made up before we get here. That's not part of what we're here for. Okay, with that, Commissioner King, you had some comments?
Thank you, Chair McVale. And thank all of the folks that came out and provided testimony and information before the commission today. I, for one, listen very carefully to what everyone has to say, and everybody has a stake in this, and everybody's thoughts are equally important. So let me just say that. On an overarching basis, there are two elephants in the room that need to be recognized. Elephant number one is there are environmental impacts from the burning of fossil fuels. If anybody doesn't believe that, after it's been so carefully recorded in the news media by scientists, the fact is, world is getting hotter, the seas are rising, and I understand how a lot of folks that are active in the county wax hyperbolic about how we need to just fix it right now. However, we have an economy that had been built for years on industries like oil and gas and coal. All of these industries have played an integral part in the advancement of civilization and the establishment of world leadership for our country. And it certainly is an industry that had a huge positive impact over time on our county. So there are really vested interests on the part of people that make their living in this industry, and we ought not to discount that at all, whether it be the owners and operators, or whether it be the folks that get paid a good salary to operate the oil rigs and drill the holes. Having said all of that, this, before us, this change of county zoning ordinances has the explicit purpose of trying to get some control or some balance between the environmental issues and the economic issues. And those are decisions that elected officials make, not appointed folks like me. You know, I'm just a washed-up YMCA director, what do I know? But having said all that, let me kind of walk through things that I'm comfortable with and things I'm not. Let me start with this. I'm concerned that whatever the board of supervisors does, they take into account the cost to the county and the taxpayers of the decisions they make. Particularly, I'm concerned that they take fair accounting of the legal costs to defend, particularly the idle well and abandoned well surety requirements that seem to be on top of state requirements. So if that's the way the board wants to go, they need to make sure that they fund that These zoning ordinance changes are going to increase the burden on staff to enforce them. And I think a more careful analysis of what those costs might be should be presented to the board so that they can take those into account as they make their decisions. I was particularly moved by the argument by one of our early speakers, that the way we're placing caps on insurance level requirements and surety requirements may create an unfair economic impact between large operators and small operators. I don't know how you fix that, but I think the board needs to take a careful look at that. Because if I'm a small operator, and my premium cost for sureties and insurance is going to go up thousands of dollars, and I have eight wells, that's a lot of money. If, on the other hand, I'm Aron or Carbon California, or CRC, you know, I have tens of thousands of wells, and it's a drop in the bucket for each well. So I think that that ought to be paid attention to. So with that, I'll say, I have no problem with the length of the permit. 15 years is fine with me. This commission gets to say if it's shorter for any reason, and they have. Carbon California is a great example. But 15 years seems like a reasonable cap to me. Have no problem with the insurance limit increase. I think staff did a pretty good analysis of why and what, and what's reasonable. With the exception, I don't like that cap that disadvantages small operators. I have no problem with the restoration bond increases. I do have a problem with the surety for idle and abandoned wells. I think it's duplicative, but it wouldn't stop me from moving these ordinances forward, with the caveat, there ought to be a warning to the board that this is going to cost money, and they ought to account for that. And finally, this professional study of the status of wells, that's going to cost money too. I think the board needs to have a careful financial analysis of what that is. Having, that's kind of all my thoughts on this, and take it for what it's worth.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Any other commissioners have a statement they'd like to make?
I'd like to make a statement.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Boyston.
Couple of things, as we went through this hearing, to me, seem apparent. One is that there truly is a problem, an issue of timely dealing with oil and gas wells. And the other is that CalJAM does not have the financial and staffing resources to do their job in a timely manner. I guess the question that I have is that it seems to me these amendments accept the state failures and pushes a policy of addressing the issue on just a local basis. We're going to do it alone. And I think fundamentally, I have a problem with that. I think the policy of this county should be to push the state and federal agencies as much as possible to properly fund and staff CalJAM, so they can do their job, and they can do it in a timely manner. Without, and the reason I say that is that anytime we do something by ourselves, when we should be pushing it on a bigger agenda, I think our people here locally suffer. The economy suffers. And I don't think we need to take that burden on ourselves. I think it's a noble cause, but I think we need to address this and push this as a policy. Let's get the system working that's already in place, rather than creating a parallel system that we, as a county, are going to suffer, I think economically, from. I don't believe we should be amending our ordinance to focus on just us solving our local problem. It isn't a local problem. It is a much bigger problem that we need to address in a different manner. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boyston. Commissioner Garcia?
I have just a few follow-up thoughts, listening to all the discussion and reading some of the public comments. One is the initial, the 15-year term for the CUP. In reading the staff report, I wondered why, or wondered if staff had considered an initial 15-year and subsequent 10-year renewal period. Some of the reasoning cited in the staff report was, you know, after the initial 15-year period, staff could review for consistency with new state laws. So I was, you know, when I was reading the staff report, inclined to think, you know, subsequent 10-year period subsequent ten-year period, I, you know, if I were staff, would be interested in seeing that, because the state laws in the next ten, twenty, thirty years could really significantly change, the more that we are learning about climate change and how, what we need to do to get ahead of it. I also was struck by some of the, I think there was at least one public comment citing an LA County policy to one-for-one require, one-for-one mitigation effort. And I didn't really hear staff speak to that, was curious about whether we have something similar here in our county in general. I think, so my, just in responding to Commissioner Boyston's comments, my, the way I am seeing, looking at this, is that the county, I do think it's a local problem, and it's a problem at multiple levels, local, state, and even at a national level, and global, because climate change affects us at every level. So I do think that I applaud staff's efforts and the Board's directive to look at this issue and analyze, carefully analyze what we can do within reason, within our jurisdiction to supplement, within reason, the surety and financial resources that we are seeing, clearly the evidence, do not exist at the state level. So I think that this is, these proposed amendments are prudent, and it looks, I think staff has done a really thorough job of analyzing and looking at other case studies and the broader policy context, including the fact that Newsom has asked CARB to phase out oil extraction by 2045. The project here that we're considering, sorry about that echo. I hear an echo, so I'll just wrap up my comments and say that I support the proposed amendments, I mean, the whole fifteen-year term and subsequent tenure, which is consistent with a decision that we voted in favor of not too long ago. And just wanted to thank the other commissioners, everyone who spoke and provided public comments, and staff for the analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adukas?
I think first.
Do you have any more comments?
Are you looking for a motion?
No, I'm asking if you have any more comments.
To other commissioners?
No. I didn't understand what she said.
Yeah, we're getting an echo. Commissioner Garcia was echoing, I think I am echoing. Could we get the appropriate?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make my comments. I don't have a particular problem with the security bonds. My only concern is to make sure that the percentage of what they have to pay for that bond is a reasonable percentage. And the other concern I have is enforcement. And those of you who know me know that I was enforcement for thirty years here, and eight years in two other positions. And the one thing that always bothered me was passing state laws, state regulations, county ordinances, where departments didn't have the staff to enforce them. They look good on paper, but if you can't enforce them, then they're useless, in my opinion. So whatever the motion is on this item seven, to either move the, well, the item's going to go to the Board with our recommendation, one way or the other. But I would like to see in the motion that there is a clear understanding of what percentage that staff is recommending to the Board of Supervisors for the security bonds. Second, I would encourage the Board to encourage our elected officials from Sacramento, either seek legislation, or in next year's budget, to properly fund Calgem, because it's blatantly obvious that Calgem is woefully underfunded, as far as capping idle and orphaned wells. If the legislature and our governor is serious about climate change, which they say every day that they are, then they need to put their money where their mouth is. That may sound crude, but that's reality. The other thing I think the Board needs to consider is additional staffing for our planning department, because not just the CUPs for oil and gas, but all the CUPs that are issued. Somehow, they should be kept track of, and the owner of those CUPs should be notified within twelve months of expiration date that it's going to be expired. Now, I know a lot of things happen, that things fall through the cracks. I know that there's notification requirements when property changes hands, but sometimes not everything gets exchanged like it should be. Oil and gas industry, I think, does a pretty good job of letting the next owner know what's going on with that piece of property and the CUP that joins it. But I think it's incumbent upon us, as the County of Ventura, to make sure that whoever the owner may be, or the next owner, or the next owner after that, knows when the CUP for sure comes up. Now, if I'm going to buy a piece of property, my own personal opinion is, that's something that I should be concerned about, especially if it, knowing that it needs a CUP. But not all people do that, because they have other things on their mind. So I think the Board, in this case, has a responsibility to make sure statewide, countywide, that there's enough staffing and dollars to do what they want to accomplish. Because if Calgem doesn't have the money, the county doesn't have the money, then it's a nice ordinance, but it's on paper and it doesn't mean a darn thing. And I'm not saying that's all the county ordinances, because obviously, that's not the case. But when a new proposed ordinance is come up, the Board needs to consider what it's going to cost. And unfortunately, there is some cost analysis in the staff report. But the way things are going, that could change before this goes before the Board of Supervisors in a couple of weeks, those dollar amounts. So that's my comments. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Chair, I just have a couple more comments after hearing everybody else speak.
Go ahead, Commissioner Boyston.
So, you know, I agree with the general premise of the amendments. I guess where I sort of deviate is the question of what is supplemental, and how high are these fees and bonds? Because I think in the end, and I think Commissioner Garcia talked about it, these things need to be reasonable on a local level to do. And it doesn't seem that way to me now. It seems to be, the fees and bonds seem to be based on the premise that Calgem is not working. And it seems to me, if Calgem was working, and was funded, and staffed, I'd be interested in what the numbers would be. You know, I believe they probably would be significantly less, or maybe even some of them go away altogether, because the system is working. So that's really my problem with the amendment, the way amendments, the way they're done now, not so much that we shouldn't have whole categories of things, is that they're not supplemental, doesn't seem to me, and they're not reasonable to implement on just a local And so my take to the Board would be, you know, what is reasonable? What is reasonable if Calgem is funded properly? It isn't to diminish anything about climate change, or that we need to do it in a timely manner, or that this isn't a local issue. It's all about, let's get the system working and not burden us only locally, because something more globally, or even at the state level, isn't working. I don't think we can put that sort of cost to ride on just our local county as being a leader. I think that's unreasonable for our population. So I won't be supporting this if it moves forward with the numbers as they appear in the staff report.
Okay. Commissioner King?
Yeah, I'm listening to everybody, and I'm trying to figure out how in the world we would craft a motion that takes into account each commissioner's concerns. And I think what I'm hearing is that, and I didn't hear much from Commissioner Adukas other than her questions, but I think what I'm hearing is, everything in the staff recommendation is okay, except the stuff that steps on Calgem's toes, in terms of the amounts of the sureties. I think that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues. I'm not sure. So I'm wondering if a motion could be made to move forward the staff report without that last piece, and with a recommendation that each element of the ordinance changes be evaluated for potential costs that the Board would need to fund. Is that even feasible? Any other commissioner want to shoot me down on that?
Any comments from other commissioners?
Well, this Commissioner Adukas, I don't necessarily agree that there need to be changes at this level to what is being proposed. As I said before, I found them reasonable, and I found them modest. I disagree with Commissioner Boyston, but, you know, that's just, it'll be reflected in how we vote on this. I'm in support of moving this forward largely unchanged, except for the concerns that I heard from both Commissioners King and Chair McVale, that we want to know what increased burden there would be in terms of, you know, cost to the county to enforce these increased sureties. I'm also in support of Commissioner Garcia's change to an initial no more than fifteen year with the ability to go no more than ten years. I thought that was a good suggestion, and I liked how she put it into context, that this is global. I don't think that it is an unfair burden on the local gas and oil industry. I think it's modest. I think it's practical. So my motion, you know, I don't know if Commissioner King was looking for a second, but I am not going to second his wanting to get this ordinance. I'm not in support of that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner King?
Well, I really wasn't trying to, I was not making a motion. I was only putting it out there to try and craft a way to take into account everybody's thoughts on the matter. But let me try and craft it this way, and then let the commissioners vote how they want to vote. I like the move that we move forward the staff's, or approve staff's recommendations to the Board, with the caveat that our comments, particularly about the funding of defense and enforcement of the ordinance, be fully considered by the Board.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I would ask the motioner in the second if they would be willing to add, encourage the Board of Supervisors to context our legislatures in Sacramento, to advocate for proper funding for Calgem, and proper funding for the planning department when it comes to enforcement and staff to keep track of CUPs' expiration dates.
I'm fine with that.
I'm not fine with all three of those, Chair McVale. I think that keeping track, for the county to be burdened with keeping track of all of the, you know, this can't just be for this single industry. We've got a way of doing things in the county where it's up to the permit holders to know what their obligations are. I think that would just be an undue burden. Could you take that part out?
No.
I'm not going to support it as maker of the motion, a secondor of the motion.
Okay. Second, is there any other comments? Secretary Luce, would you call?
We don't have a second.
She.
Pardon?
Commissioner Adukas seconded.
No, she withdrew her second.
Yes. I withdrew my second because of the recommendation that the county be responsible for tracking down and reaching out to people and how they're constantly moving. I don't think that's, I don't think that's something that should be taken upon.
If I may, trying to clarify, you know, it's obviously up to your commission, but I understood Chair McVale is offering an amendment to Commissioner King's motion that was on the floor. So I think the, maybe it's worth Commissioner King reiterating your motion that's on the floor.
So the original motion would stand if there's no second or two accepting changes? And I didn't hear whether there was. So then...
Well, originally, Commissioner Adukas seconded the motion.
Okay. And that motion essentially was that we recommend staff's, or move forward staff's recommendation with our comments. I'm assuming that you recorded all... staff's recommendation with our comments. I'm assuming that you recorded all of those with our comments about making sure they have a cost analysis of the implementation of the ordinance changes. Is that what Commissioner Adukas, is that your understanding of my initial motion?
Yeah, I was in support of the original motion.
Okay. Well, we have a motion second on the floor, so I'll leave it to the chair.
A note of clarification, Director Ward. Commissioner King's motion said to include our comments. Does it include just the comments, or all of our comments?
Thank you, Chair McVeil and Commissioner King. I think we would need clarification. In my writing down quickly, what I heard in the motion was, yes, supportive staff recommendations, as identified in the staff report. Funding, what I wrote down, was funding to support staff enforcement of the ordinance. And then I thought you indicated legal support.
Yes, and legal defense.
Legal defense, okay. So that's what I had written down, not quite your last comment, which was more talking about the analysis from an economic standpoint, which were discussion points from, introduced by the public, and some of the dialogue amongst the commissioners. So all I have are just those two points, funding of staff enforcement and legal defense support.
Okay, well, there was also the issue about the study, and that was going to cost money. I was trying to be broader in the sense of providing a cost analysis to the board on the entire approval of staff recommended zoning ordinance changes.
So a third element would be, in this, in your motion then, is a cost analysis to the ordinance provisions?
Correct.
Okay.
Cost analysis to the county of the ordinance provisions.
Could I just ask for clarification on that?
Yeah, is that?
Commissioner Adukas, go ahead. Commissioner Adukas, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We're not, the county, the planning commission isn't spending money here, right? Just to clarify, Commissioner King's recommendation, we are making a recommendation that the Board of Supervisors consider the costs. We're not demanding that there be a cost analysis done, right? Because we don't want to get into a situation where the planning commission is overstepping its bounds.
No, absolutely not. The way you interpreted is the way that I intended it, which is only, we're sending forward our recommendation with suggestions for what the board should consider.
Excellent.
Okay.
Agreed.
So we have, are we good on the motion in the second now? No?
I just want clarification. When you say cost analysis, do you mean cost analysis of costs incurred by the county?
Yes, only the costs incurred by the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
I think, if I'm, just wanted to make sure I'm, I think the intent of what you're asking is for staff to include an assessment of fiscal impact in their report to the board, right?
I think my recommendation is that the board consider financial impact. How they do that, and how they give direction to staff, that's the board's rule, not ours.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
We good? We good?
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
I can see planners, I would nod your head or something.
I'm just going to get clarification, excuse me. So you're, just so we're clear, we're going to be asking, you're going to be recommending that the board include direction to the planning division to conduct a cost analysis for costs borne by the county.
Well, no, that's not exactly the motion. The motion was that the board consider.
Okay.
And Chair McVeil, Commissioner King, the board, all of our board letters do have a fiscal section as part of every report. So when you're asking to us to consider the cost analysis incurred to the county, we would address part of that within that section, taking this ordinance to the board.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay. I think we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
Just one more thing. I did think that Commissioner Garcia's recommendation that it go no more than 15 with the possibility of a no more than 10-year extension was a good thought. Was that something that you didn't want to take up, Commissioner King?
That was not part of my motion.
Okay. And then also, just so that we don't simply ignore the whole issue, the one-to-one replacement that we got, I don't know, 300 emails last night recommending that we do a one-for-one. Is that part of your consideration, Commissioner King?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Secretary Luce, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Commissioner Adukas?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyston?
No.
Chair McVeil?
Before I vote, I'm a little bit disappointed that we're not talking about what, on the state level, we need to do with CalJim. What we do in Ventura County is nice, but it's barely a drop in the bucket. And if we don't consider what goes on in the rest of the 57 counties in the state, then we're not really going to accomplish anything in the long term. So if we can't...
I was in support of it in the second, but you refused to divorce that one little problem about it.
Commissioner Adukas, let me finish.
I apologize for interrupting.
Because I think we have an obligation to make recommendations to the board. That's what we're here for. And that's what we're doing with the motion in the second that's on this floor right now. So I feel strongly that we need to do something more regionally, more globally, or nationally, like Commissioner Garcia mentioned. And in my opinion, this doesn't do it. So I vote no. Motion on the floor, carried three to two. Okay. Next item on the agenda, is there any commissioners that have comments and things they'd like to bring up at a future date? Commissioner King?
No.
Oh. Oh, okay. Hearing none. Director Ward, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Chair McVeil. I don't have any, well, actually, that's not true. I do have a board item to report out. It's been a busy week. We were at the board on Tuesday for the acceptance of the Coastal Commission modifications to the local coastal program amendments related to our environmentally sensitive habitat areas, ESHA, and the dark skies provisions that relate to the Santa Monica Mountains. The Coastal Commission heard this in April of this year. Actually, their hearing was in this chamber, locally, and there were a series of modifications proposed. It was a total of 81 modifications. And while that number does seem high, it really isn't in the context of the amount of policy changes and zoning ordinance amendments in the coastal zoning ordinance. And you might all recall that, because you reviewed those materials late summer of last year, before it went to the board last October. Staff, Abigail Conry, Erin Hingstrom in particular, working with our county council office, spent most of March going through those modifications and working directly with the Coastal Commission staff. There were many modifications that we expressed concerns with. They listened. They heard about our local process and what was involved in a very lengthy ordinance and policy creation for the sensitive habitat and for the dark skies. And so the 81 modifications, the vast majority of those were clarifications, some grammatical edits that they had for us that were actually helpful. And then there were about five areas of focus, and we presented that on Tuesday to the board, explained that of those five related items that were of more substance, we had worked with the other county agencies, fire agency in particular, also their public works, and with the Harbor District, and felt, from staff's perspective, that those were acceptable for the board to consider accepting. They did that. And so that is the final step from the local side of the certification process. And now we will be providing an acceptance of those modifications by resolution to the executive director of the Coastal Commission, and we're expecting them to, for him to make that action in their September meeting. And that will actually conclude that LCP amendment process. There's a lot of implementation associated with that effort, so that will be our focus definitely into 2023 and beyond. So that was great to actually conclude a very long process that the county's been involved in. Beyond that, the only thing to note is for your next hearing, which would be on August 18th, this will be a consideration of another ordinance amendments related to the non-coastal zone for accessory dwelling units, and to add regulations for junior accessory dwelling units, for two ADUs, consistent with changes in government code and state law that have occurred pretty much every year now, for about three years. And so that will be your focus for August 18th. Thank you.
Okay. Any other things to be brought before the commission? Hearing none. I adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.